Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Columbia Public Library. We are glad you are here and showing some interest in this election in August, which sometimes doesn't draw the most interest, but by your attendance here in the friends room at the Columbia Public Library, and by those of you who are listening to us online or maybe watching this as recorded, and also listening on the radio stations, we do appreciate you being here. My name is David Lyle, and I am honored again to be asked to be the moderator of this League of Women Voters in the Columbia Public Library Hybrid Candidate Forum. You'll find out by the end why it's called hybrid, because we have not only candidates, but we have some issues that we're going to be talking about later on this evening. We would like to thank KFRU and KOPN. They are doing live broadcast of this forum tonight. And we're going to be focusing on the August 6th primary. Before I get into the official introductions, just a word about these cards that are available. Maybe right outside, thank you, right outside the door of the friends room, and you could also, if you're not in attendance here, as many who are participating are not, you can go on the showmeboone.com/quirk for your voter ID requirements, and you can go to the frequently asked questions there on how do you vote. But these cards are good because they'll tell you about Election Day, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I've already received my information from the county clerk telling me where I will vote and any other information that I need. There are polling places that will be open for early voting, and this card is very helpful with that. There will be open voting on July 27th, 28th, August 3rd, and also July 23rd through August 5th. Columbia Mall will be hosting the first of those Douglas High School, Southern Boone County Public Library, and the Centralia Library, and then the Boone County Government Commission Chamber. So I really appreciate the fact that they, these are available, and then also something else that the League does, and they do it very well, is they put together a voter guide. I printed mine off from the computer. They have them already published, and they're at the back of this room. Those are the ballot issues, not the candidate.
Get it online.
You can get them online, and we'll tell you later on what the website is for League of Women Voters, because we want to get focused on the primary election contested races in Boone County. The Republican nomination for Missouri State Representative District 44, Democratic nomination for Missouri State Representative District 50, and the Democratic nomination for Boone County Sheriff. The winner of these nominations for the two state representative seats will go on to face an opponent on the November 5th election ballot. The winner of the sheriff race will face no opposition in the general election. We also have information tonight on Missouri Constitutional Amendments 1 and 4, and Columbia Proposition 1. So let's get started. First, we'll have the Republican Candidates for State Representative District 44. Those of you who are not in the room, they're up at the front of our room, and they're ready to go with questions and opening statements. The Republican Candidates are Bryce Beal and John Martin. The winner of this contest will face Democratic Candidate Dave Rathell in the November election. Each candidate will have time for a two-minute opening statement. That'll be followed by questions that the League of Women Voters have asked me to ask them, and then we will have questions from our audience in person. When you got here tonight, there are index cards on the seat. If you could put your question on that, and when you have a question ready to go, raise it up, and one of the League members will bring it up to the front here. And also, if you're watching tonight or listening tonight on the Zoom, you can ask questions in the chat section there. For our in-person audience, use those note cards. If you're on Zoom, you can use the chat section. Each candidate will have the two-minute opener, then they'll be given one minute to answer each question. After questions and answers, each candidate will have time for a one-minute closing statement. We'll have a warning sign up front that will give you an idea of how you're doing, 30 seconds, and then stop. If you go real long, they come up and they hit you on the head. So we're going to go opening statements in the ballot order, and then reverse ballot order for the closing statements. So Bryce Beal, welcome. We're glad you're here tonight. Your opening statements, please.
Well, first, I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for having us. This is a great opportunity to get to speak with voters. The only one that I know of where we're actually going to be asked questions, so thank you so much for that. A little bit about my background. So I was raised in Singa Y Trailer. There were six of us living in there, and my mom was the only one working. She made $7 an hour. We, to say that we were below the poverty line would be an understatement. I used my experience scrapping to learn how to scrap in education. I graduated at the top of my high school class as a valedictorian. I went on to college and then to law school. I got a generous scholarship that allowed me to attend Washington University School of Law in St. Louis, where I graduated and then clerked for a federal judge. I now practice constitutional law with the Attorney General's Office, which Marilyn and I were discussing earlier. We were on the opposite side of an issue last year. But through all of that, I've seen the importance of illegal knowledge in drafting legislation, because we need someone who understands what the courts look at, how the legislation is interpreted, and how we can write laws that stay within the bounds of the Constitution. Anyone that looks at my website can see that I'm a Christian conservative and a constitutionalist, and I take that to heart as a constitutional lawyer, because we must stay within the bounds of the Constitution. The three main focuses of my campaign so far have been education, prosecution, and tax relief. Right now, in education, we need school choice. Looks like I'm down to 30 seconds, so I'll be quick, but we need more school choice. We need prosecutors who will do their job and make sure that once the cops take people off the streets, that those criminals stay off of our streets, especially with the fentanyl crisis killing people in Missouri every day. Finally, with taxes, Missouri has the third highest personal property taxes in the country right now, and people simply cannot afford those taxes in this economy. I'm Bryce Beal, running for the 44th district, and I ask for everyone's vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beal. John Martin will have your opening remarks, please.
Yes, also I echo, I thank you, League of Women Voters, for the opportunity to introduce myself tonight and speak for you guys. Thanks for organizing this. My name is John Martin. I'm a small business owner. My company is proplumping and hydrojetting, and also a former pastor, Southern Baptist pastor, in churches in Paulsville in Columbia. My wife is Lisa, been married 31 years. We have four children. Three have graduated from Hickman High School. All three graduated from University of Missouri. And my 13-year-old, my youngest, is playing for the Daniel Boone Little League 13-U Regional Tournament right now, and they lost to Iowa, but they beat Illinois, they beat Kentucky. And so they're still alive. It's a double elimination up in Anthony, Iowa. And so I've been up there the last several days, and somebody yells, "Strike three," or something real quick. I'm running back to baseball games. But my qualifications for office, again, a small business owner, former pastor. I'm a Chamber of Commerce member in all the different towns in our district. Our district is Centralia, Paulsville, East Columbia. We have Ashland, as well as Hartsburg, even McBane, and so those towns, I'm a small, I'm a Chamber of Commerce member. Lifelong Boone County resident, born and raised in Centralia on a family farm, and active in 4H and FFA. Actually have a booth right now at the Boone County Fair. Boone County Fair Ham Show and show and cattle, and those kind of things are very important. My family's from an agriculture background. I coached baseball, Little League, things like that, 4H volunteer. I'm an investor in regional economic development here in the area. I'm a limited government-type person. I think government has three main roles. The first role would be public safety, law and order, keeping criminals off the streets, things like that, supporting our police. Third would be infrastructure, roads and bridges. That's very important for our commerce and our economy. And then third would be education. Obviously, we need to have quality education, supporting the University of Missouri. Obviously, it's very dear to me with my three kids going through there, have an agriculture background. For example, the vet school, I'll just emphasize that. A lot of veterinarians in my family and ag teachers in my family, so the importance of supporting that. And so I've been endorsed by Cherie Rice. She's the current office holder. She's endorsed me as the next candidate, so I appreciate that. Also been endorsed by Missouri Right to Life, the Missouri Catalmans Association, and also got the exclusive endorsement by Missouri Fraternal Order of Police, so I'm very grateful for that endorsement.
You may need to be cloned, so you can be at the baseball tournament and the fair. All right. First question, you have a minute to answer this, and we'll start with John Martin. Boone County can now have charter schools. What public oversight should be put in place since the charter schools would be getting public dollars? And the second part of this question, should a charter school be required to accept all students, including those with special needs?
Yeah, the public oversight, I know that's part of the organization. I know there's a private company that does that, but there should be some public oversight of that. I think the charter schools are a good idea, because it provides another alternative. When if parents are really happy with their public schools, that's great. But if they need another alternative, I think that's important. And then what was the second part of the question?
Second's hard. Should they be required to accept all students, including those with special needs? Or you could go the first part, since the charter schools would be getting public dollars, what oversight would you accept?
Well, I said the oversight, there should be oversight because of receiving public funds. I think that's appropriate, and they should be allowing your kids with disabilities in that school.
Question right there, Carol, if you want to get that one right behind you. All right, Bryce Beal, your same question, and that will be, I'll repeat it again. Boone County can now have charter schools. What public oversight should be put in place since the charter schools will be getting public dollars, and then should a charter school be required to accept all students, including those with special needs?
Yeah, so I'll start with the first point on oversight. I think in education, whether it be in traditional public schools or in charter school form, parental oversight is one of the keys. The local community holding the schools accountable. And so that's why I've been a large proponent of the Parents' Bill of Rights, because parents deserve to know what's being taught in schools, how the money is being spent in those schools, and how schools are performing. So I think first, we have to start at community oversight with the parents knowing what's going on and being able to exercise some oversight and have an input in their children's education. To go to the second point, should the school accept everyone? Yes, I don't think that the school should be able to discriminate based on disability, but at some point, there would have to be a cap on the number of students because of facility size. So I think, you know, I can imagine there will be an application process, but I think that disability should not disqualify anyone from going to the charter school.
We're going through the questions from the League of Women Voters first, and Bryce Beal, you'll be the first on this one. The Missouri General Assembly is chipping away at all forms of taxes. How do you propose that cities, counties, schools, libraries, fire districts perform services for the public with less and less money?
Absolutely. So, you know, like I mentioned, I'm a large proponent of eliminating the personal property tax. And I think that the way that we do this is by offsetting any taxes that we go down in the personal property tax or property tax areas with an increased sales tax. With sales tax, we could increase by less than half a percent and offset all of the personal property tax in the state of Missouri. What that would allow us to do is help for out-of-state individuals who are coming into our state to pay their fair share of the burden for Missouri infrastructure. For instance, we have the NFL draft in Kansas City. We have the St. Louis Arch in St. Louis. A lot of people come into this state, they use our resources, they use our infrastructure, but they don't pay as much as us Missourians. So by offsetting with a sales tax, it's going to lower the tax burden on the citizens of Missouri and help us to pay for that difference.
John Martin, same question. Missouri General Assembly continues to chip away at all forms of taxes. How do you propose cities, counties, schools, libraries, fire districts perform services for the public with less and less money?
Yes, the proposal to eliminate the personal income tax, whether it be on a graduated scale or things like that, that has to be really studied. I lean more towards eliminating the personal income tax instead of the property tax. That would have to really be studied, because again, like you said, the property tax is so tied into the schools and road district, things like that. So I think there could definitely be some revisions there, and they lean more towards a sales tax issue as far as, because that's more of a consumption tax. The most regressive type of taxes is income taxes. The more you make, the more they take. And so I think that income tax is giving a 4%, you know, our basic income tax is about 4% for the average individual, 4%. I think 1% a year, knock that out. There's lots of areas of government that can be trimmed, and that can give money back to our families, which are really hurting right now with inflation, high gas prices, high food prices. So I think starting with income tax will be an economic stimulus. I believe it's very important.
We can do the audience question. Okay, I'll save the last League of Women Voters question, because it might be a good last one. Let's go to questions from the audience. Do you support, John Martin, you're first on this one, do you support sending the Missouri National Guard at taxpayers' expense to the southern border? Why or why not?
Yes, I do. I support Governor Parson doing that. I support it of the governor of Texas, Governor Abbott, because it's such a crisis with illegal aliens and immigrants coming in, and the drug crisis, the criminal crisis that's happening, and so that's affecting the state of Missouri. You have I-44, you have I-70, all that coming through our state, and so I definitely support that. But we need to have a stronger border policy, and then the state of Missouri can help in that.
Bryce Beal, same question for you. Do you support sending the Missouri National Guard at taxpayers' expense to the southern border? Why or why not?
I do. And so if we look at the state of Missouri right now, the leading cause of death for individuals aged 18 to 45 is drug overdose. 70% of those drug overdoses are from opiates. As we all know, a large number of opiate deaths are due to fentanyl. Fentanyl is being trafficked across the southern border in record numbers at the moment. The most recent federal prosecutorial numbers from the United States Attorney's Office say that Boone County is in the top 10 counties in the state of Missouri for fentanyl deaths. That is simply unacceptable, and it is truly impacting the people in the 44th district and in all of Boone County. So I believe if we can save the lives of the people here in Boone County, then yes, it is worth us sending our money to protect our citizens.
Let's go to another audience member question, and Bryce Beal, you're first on this one. Christian nationalism is a rising ideology. The Constitution is very clear and supported by Thomas Jefferson, who stated that it is clear there is a separation of church and state. What will you do to keep this ideology out of our politics, out of our schools?
Absolutely. So I think that the separation of church and state means that there can be no state-sponsored religion. It does not mean that Christian ideology cannot inform the decisions of legislators any more than any other religion can inform the decisions of the legislators. We all have our own personal backstories, the way that we've been raised, the thing, our lived experience that informs the way that we view the world. So to me, my Christian faith informs the way that I view the world, but it's not a problem with separation of church and state, because it's not the state establishing a religion, and that is what the Constitution means by separation of church and state. So I think that there is a problem, and to some extent, when you talk about nationalism, but I think that it's not Christian nationalism. I think it's across the board, whether it's white nationalism, Christian nationalism, or other nationalism, where people kind of get into an echo chamber and start doing things that aren't right. But I think at the end of the day, it's not the greatest thing challenging our system at the moment.
John Martin, Christian nationalism, a rising ideology. The Constitution is clear and supported by Thomas Jefferson, who stated that it is clear there is a separation of church and state. What will you do to keep this ideology out of our politics, out of our schools?
It's unmistakable that our country has a Christian, a Judeo-Christian background. That's very much the founding of our country. Doesn't mean that everybody that came here, all the founding fathers were born again Christians, things like that. We have an unmistakable Judeo-Christian background, and so, for example, our nation's support of the nation of Israel should be absolute and should be strong. We have to support them. When it comes to Christian nationalism, for example, if it's used then to discriminate against people, things like that, that's not appropriate. Again, I think our Constitution allows for freedom of speech, and so we definitely do not want to do things where people's speech are inhibited, where people have the freedom to gather, the freedom to protest, things like that, but it should be done in a peaceful way. And if people are doing things that are against other people's rights, they should be prosecuted. And if there are riots or things like that that happen in the name of religion or things like that, to force religion on somebody, that is not appropriate at all. And so that's definitely a separation of church and state. It should not be forced upon people.
I'll need some help with this one from the person who handed the small piece of paper. How will your support of Students of 504 Plans? What's a 504?
There's some discipline plans, and those are supported in public school.
So it's a discipline. So this question has to do with the 504 Plan, which is a plan that I would guess currently schools work together, administration, teachers, parents, counselors, to come up with a plan for someone who is having a hard time acting correctly in a classroom. So we'll start with John Martin on this one. How will you support Students of 504 Plans in charter schools?
Well, I'm not familiar with the exact specifics of the 504 Plan. I'll just kind of give a general statement. Obviously, parents and schoolteachers, things like that, and then school administrators, there needs to be solid discipline within the schools. There needs to be a clear plan of conduct, and then to follow that plan.
Disruptive.
Yes.
Because of mental, emotional, physical, whatever reasons. It has nothing to do with the school discipline. It has to do with that particular student.
I think it gets back to how will charter schools accept all kinds of students? Or do you believe a charter school will exist that can be selective in its students?
Students that need special needs.
With that. Well, when it comes to, for example, the charter schools, there's going to be, when they put together the organization of that, as far as how many students they can accept and things like that. If there are students that have those type of needs, they need to be taken care of. If there are students in that situation, I would support when there would be funding there to support those types of needs, if those students are in that environment. And so I would definitely support that.
Bryce Beal, same question to you.
Yeah, so I would say that I also would support, I'm not familiar with the 504 Plan and exactly what it is from your description, but students that have these issues need to be taken care of like every other student. My wife's brother, for instance, has pretty severe autism and was a product of public schools that took very good care of him. You know, he had discipline issues because he was simply unable to control himself. So this is an issue that strikes close to home for me, and I think that we need to provide the best education for the most students possible. And I think that with charter schools, it will incentivize that, because what you'll see is the competitive market, the free market, will say, this school is performing better than other schools, and so if the other schools don't start performing on that same level, then they're going to lose students. So it's going to create a competitive market where every school, a rising tide raises all boats, so to speak.
We are nearly out of time. I apologize for the questions that I cannot get to for these candidates, but I do want to ask one final question. It's one from the League of Women Voters. Bryce Beal, you're first. You have similar positions with Mr. Martin on issues. What is the number one reason a voter should vote for you?
I think it's twofold. So first of all, it's because I have the experience practicing law and working in the legislature to understand how laws are written, to understand how we need to write them to fall within the bounds of the Constitution. I have an in-depth knowledge of the legislative process from working for members of Congress in Washington, DC as well. And the second is that I actually live in the 44th district. You know, The Missouri Times put out an article today, John does not live in the 44th district, and Missouri statutes are very clear that you have to live in the district. A person that lives in the district is connected to the district. They know the people of the district, and the decisions that they make in Jefferson City actually affect them in their homes. So as someone who actually lives in the district, it's very close to home to me that we have someone who represents our community.
And John Martin, same question to you. You have similar positions with Mr. Beal. What is the number one reason a voter should vote for you?
The number one reason I would say is my business experience as a business owner, the importance of people, leadership, leading people and making decisions regarding budgets, and then leading out with MoDOT or different organizations within the state government, education, things like that, to be able to look at a part of government and say, here's something that's working, here's something that's not working. I have to make decisions every day as a business owner to, you know, things that are good for my business or things that are bad for my business. Also, as a pastoral, so I think people leadership and just the overall experience. I'm a native of Boone County, grew up here all my life, and so the importance of that. And then also to clarify, I know Bryce was asking about that. There's people have questions. I ran for the 47th, though, you know, two years ago. And then a year ago, I decided to run for the 44th. I'm a native of Centralia. My wife's from Paulsville. And then at that point, I knew that you had to be a resident of the district, and so I purchased a home in the 44th to move there last summer. So you have to be a voter, you have to be a registered voter in the district. That's no secret. I do own land and a home in the 47th, but that's not my primary. My primary home is in the 44th.
Well, I have closing statements now. You have 60 seconds, kind of like a free minute. Anything that you wanted to say or to reiterate or repeat, you can do so in this closing statement. And John Martin, you're first on this one.
Sure. Again, I appreciate your vote August the 6th. Obviously, there are going to be two of us on the Republican ballots. Again, my experience as a Boone County native, as a business owner, as a former pastor, not only with business leadership, but also empathy for people as a Christian, as a pastor, the importance of reaching out to our families and tax reform, and you definitely want to lead out and trying to eliminate the personal income tax. I would say 1% a year to knock that out, so that we can get more money back in the hands of our families. And I think just the overall experience. Bryce graduated from law school in 2022. He's new to Missouri, came here from Illinois to law school. So while we're really glad young people are getting involved in the Republican Party, I think my overall experience and my overall leadership, improving leadership here in Boone County as a pastor, as well as a business owner, which I think is very, you know, is a lot of difference between Bryce and I in those areas. So I appreciate your vote August the 6th. John Martin, thank you. Bryce Beal, your closing statement.
Absolutely. Once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this wonderful forum, and appreciate all the questions from the audience. So John mentioned his endorsements earlier, so I'll mention some of mine. Therese Linker, the mayor of Ashland, has endorsed me. Kate O'Rey, the mayor of Paulsville, has endorsed me. Bill Mullen dorff, the chairman of the Board of Trustees of Hartsburg, has endorsed me. Missouri Right to Life has endorsed me. The Attorney General of the state of Missouri, Andrew Bailey, has endorsed me. So I'm now without my own endorsements. I would prefer not to list them, but that's so it goes. But you know, I think that people leadership is very important in the case of the state legislature, but more important is the ability to draft laws. When you're a state representative, your job is to write laws that are effective for the people of Missouri that don't get bogged down in court, being tried for years and years, costing the taxpayers thousands and millions of dollars, because the legislation was simply drafted poorly. In my case, I have worked tirelessly to defend Missouri's laws. I have seen over and over again how the courts look at these laws, and I know how to draft legislation that will be effective and stop getting drugged down in court for years.
All right. Thank you, Bryce Beal. Bryce Beal, John Martin, the candidates. Thank you both. We'll take a break for two minutes. We'll come back and we'll do the Democratic Candidates for Primary from the 50th Legislature District. Thank you. Welcome back. We are again broadcasting live on KFRU and KOPN, so we appreciate our radio audience. Appreciate also those who are listening and participating today remotely through Zoom. And of course, we do much appreciate those who are here in person for this League of Women Voters and Columbia Public Library Candidate Forum. We have switched seats and house districts to the 50th. We're going to have a Democratic primary for the Candidates for House District 50, Jeff Basinger and Greg Bush. The winner of the primary election will face Republican candidate Joshua Blakeman in November. Each candidate, like we just had a moment ago, will be given a minute to answer each question. They'll have a minute wrap-up, but we'll start with a two-minute opening comment from each of them. We have a warning sign again that they will see that gives them an idea of how close they are to getting to the limit of their time. Again, questions that you have can be written on your index cards if you're here in the friends room. If you are participating through Zoom, use the chat feature there, and we will get the questions as many as we can within the allotted time for this portion of our evening. So again, thank you, candidates, for being here. We're going to do the ballot order for opening statements. So Jeff Basinger, you may present your two-minute opening remarks. Welcome.
Thank you much. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and for everybody being here, participating in your interest in this election. I'm Jeff Basinger. A bit about me, I'm a lifelong Missouri resident. I'm a Zoo graduate. Always had an interest in serving in public service. I currently own a law firm downtown. I used to work in legal aid for eight years. I live in town with my wife and two children. I have always wanted to help out through my job. I worked in legal aid, been involved at Dynasty International ACLU, and that's why I was so excited when October 25th, I found out that this spot was opening. So it looked like a good next step for me to try to help out. I feel like I can try to help our district. We have a lot of problems. It's not just one subject matter, you know? We need strong public schools, strong reproductive rights. Our social services are falling apart. Our transgender friends and family are under attack. There's a lot of things to work on. I think that's one advantage of being a lawyer. It's not just one subject matter. Legal knowledge, as you heard from the previous speaker, drafting good legislation is another big advantage. And I want to use my knowledge to take action also, you know? It's not just that I've been, for instance, a critic of Andrew Bailey for his entire tenure and Eric Schmidt before him. I try to take action to do it. You know, you may have read the papers a couple of weeks ago. We got an update on the public, on the backlog, on sunshine requests. It's been going on since Eric Schmidt. It's something that came from my request back in August. You know, we need public accountability for these officials, and that's a legal tool I use to try to fix that problem. Nobody likes that Columbia is divided, gerrymandered right down broadly, you know? It's something that we can fix. There's a mathematical solution to it. You can see it right in the Constitution. It got snuck by the voters in a ballot panel where it didn't get mentioned. There's a 15% mathematical level called wasted vote level. You can change it. You can fix gerrymandering by mathematics. Look to Ohio. They're going to vote on it in November. Utah just had a court case about it, too. I can use these tools to try to help us out, solve our problems. I think that we can work together to do it. I just want to be a part of the team. This is an important job. I hope to help everyone out.
All right. Thank you, sir. And now Greg Bush, your opening remarks.
Thank you, David. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you to Denny Boone Regional Library for hosting this event. My name is Greg Bush. I am also running for House District 50. I am a registered nurse by trade. I like to say that I began my healthcare career back in 2006 when I was janitoring in an ICU, pushing a mop and cleaning beds, but somebody took the time to invest in me. And because of that, I was able to go to nursing school through their accelerated program, which is an extra fast way to get your nursing degree, while I was working full-time. And then I became a registered nurse on a med search floor where I worked my way up. And now I'm on leave from MU Healthcare, where I'm with the coordinator for patient education and professional development for the six hospitals and the 90-plus clinics. One of the reasons why I'm running, because when I One of the reasons why I'm running, because when I look around the state of Missouri and particularly in Boone County, I can't help but think that we're somehow sliding towards a terminal diagnosis. We have people who are dying from fentanyl. We have women and children that can't get the healthcare that supports who they are. Now, when I look down in Jeff City, I see that there's a lot of quarreling and a lot of fighting. I didn't have that luxury as a nurse to quarrel with my, uh, colleagues. We actually had to work together for a common good. Nurses are professional rapport builders. And somebody comes into my hospital or into my room, we take their clothes, we give them a gown that opens funny in the back and we stick needles. And you can't do that if you don't have a good rapport with people. So that's one of the reasons why I'm running is having those levels of skills to go down there, build relationships. Uh, not only intra-party, but across party lines and actually get things done for Missouri and get things done for the fifty.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to questions now, and I'm going to start with a couple of the questions like we did previously from the League of Women Voters. We'll be curious as to your answers on this. Greg Bush, we'll go first with you. I know both of the candidates for the forty-fourth, very strong supporters of charter schools. This question has to do with Boone County now being able to have charter schools. What public oversight would you put in place? Since charter schools would be getting public dollars and should a charter, charter school be required to accept all students, including those with special needs?
I'm glad I got here early, so I got that preview. Um, what kind of oversight needs to be required for charter schools? That's kind of a really hard question because if you have too much burdens, then it's just becoming another public school. But the reality is this. Is charter schools taking public money? You can't be spending public money without some level of public oversight. I would favor, uh, and, uh, omniscience sorts. Uh, to make sure that public money is spent for the benefit of everyone. Should they be forced to accept all students? Have a child with an individualized education plan. Um, when I hear school choice, I I think that it's the school's choice whether or not they would be educating my son or not. And that's a real challenge for me, particularly because we all pay taxes into a public school system that should have a floor that raises everybody up. So those are the, my, my answer to those two parts.
All right. We'll go to Jeff Basinger and the same question. Since Boone County can now have charter schools, what public oversight should be put in place? Since the charter schools will be getting public dollars and should a charter school be required to accept all students, including those with special needs?
I think that, uh, the, the best kind of oversight you could give for charter schools would basically to be try to make them as much like public schools as you can. I think that, um, public records, public meetings, board oversight, those are things that public schools have. And that's what makes them accountable, uh, are accountable schools across the, um, the state. Um, should they have to accept, um, students with special needs? Yes, the way I've heard it praised is it's not really school choice. It's them choosing you, you know? If you're a high-dollar student, then you're going to get left behind because you don't make them money. We see that across the board with people that have higher problems and needs, you know? Um, things like the American Disabilities Act, uh, helping out people that have greater needs, those are, uh, American values. And I don't think that people should be able to skate by them. Um, I also hope, and it's something I've written about, that we don't get this charter school because I think it's unconstitutional. I think Boone County was targeted. And I hope they bring a suit to challenge it. I think it was a special law and you needed general law. I think they targeted us unbearably. I hope we don't get the charter school to begin with.
I'm looking at this next question and Jeff Basinger, you will ask you to answer this first. It's an interesting question for Democrats because of their smaller voices in Jefferson City right now, but the Missouri General Assembly chips away at all forms of taxes. So how do you propose cities, county, schools, libraries, fire districts perform services for the public with less and less money?
I think that, um, my opposite is kind of going to be the, uh, my answer is going to be the opposite of what you heard from your previous panelists. I think that your most regressive taxes, and I couldn't believe what I heard about income tax being the most regressive one. Uh, it's sales tax. And I think that's why I made it a big part of, um, my campaign to say that we need to eliminate something like the food tax. There's other taxes out there, um, on medical care and, um, things like diapers, menstrual products, those types of medical products that you can eliminate the tax on. And so money has to come from somewhere. Um, I think that our best option for Missouri to attract jobs, keep people, people here, make it a place where people want to live, work and go to school is to make it a good place for workers and average people, and that means reducing the sales tax. We have near the top five lowest income in corporate taxes. If lower and all those things help in this major economy boom, then we would have seen it happen in Kansas, but under the brownback era, the exact opposite happened. So, and we've already been lower and we're behind other, other states. So make sure we don't keep slashing those and reduce sales tax.
Greg Bush, would you like for me to repeat this question, please? The Missouri General Assembly continues to chip away at all forms of taxes. How do you propose cities, counties, schools, libraries, fire districts, et cetera? Perform services for the public with less and less money?
These kinds of taxes, uh, lowering taxes and decreasing services really kind of an attack on working families. These are services that working families need in order to make sure that we can live and work uh, safely in our areas from law enforcement to firefighters to roads and bridges to schools. Uh, how can we do more with less? The reality is we can't do more with less and there's a lot down in Jeff City. There's, uh, allegedly the surplus that's down in Jeff City, right? It's not really a surplus. What's happening is that working families are being squeezed and asked to do more and more things, going to food banks and such. Uh, with respect to, uh, Medicaid, uh, applications that are not being filled in. Government is doing less, less and less and hoarding that money down in Jeff City. So it's akin to a family where you have all this money in a bank account and mom and dad are doing really good. If the kids are somehow starving, uh, in the corner. So we can't feed them. We're going to have to find revenue. There is revenue available. The question is, what do we want to do with the revenue?
Great. Bush, you'll be first on this one. Um, it has to do with reproductive rights. And the question and its basis will be, how will you fight in Jefferson City to return control to families over their personal and private decisions such as reproductive rights?
Well, all medical rights are personally private decisions. Uh, I mean, my exam room is a sacred space between, uh, my patient and, uh, her doctor and her god. It has nothing to do with anybody else, particularly in particular extremists. Are we going to fight this? Um, golly, I hope this ballot initiative passes. Uh, number one, um, we, I was down there at the steps of the Capitol when we turned in those three hundred and eighty thousand signatures. There is a real hunger, um, for people to have reproductive freedom and reproductive, reproductive justice for IDF. Um, other fertility treatments. Um, when I've been out and talking to Bill, I want to give everybody a little bit of hope right now, particularly here in Boone County. Sometimes it feels a little bit hopeless. I have met two people, one of whom was not on my walk list, another one was on the walk list. And both of them are women and they said, I'm Catholic, I'm pro-life and I have daughters. And I'm going to be voting to make sure that my daughters have access to the full range of reproductive. And so I am hopeful. Uh, so hopefully we don't, hopefully this gets settled, uh, coming up.
And now Jeff Basinger, the question, how will you fight in Jefferson, uh, excuse me? I gotta remember how to use a microphone. How will you, uh, fight in Jefferson City to return control to families over personal private decisions like reproductive rights?
Yes, uh, we need to get every single voter out to vote in November and get this reproductive rights and then then pass absolutely. That's going to take care of a huge part of it, obviously. Um, we need to, we can propose to protect in vitro fertilization, you know? Sometimes the Republicans go so far that they're the dog that catches the car and there's a whole lot of support for in vitro fertilization, you know? Um, so much so that on the federal level, they say they support it, although they vote against it. So we're getting close to getting the votes, I think, in some areas. Um, you can protect things more. There's a lot of bipartisan support about extending things like prescriptions for birth control to a year. Um, that's protecting reproductive, uh, issues. And then using my legal background, you know, if they're going to start to pass all these new trap laws after, um, in, after November, uh, saying you need pelvic exams or you need a doctor with admitting privileges. You know, you can look to other states and see if you get shot down, um, potentially, and then try to preempt that argument so it doesn't have to go to court. And then I think the number one thing we also need to do other than passing reproductive rights is we need to elect Elon Ebro as the Attorney General. You can have all the laws you want. If you have a bad attorney general that brings cases and suits people having miscarriages and things like that, then you're not going to have all your rights.
I love this question because it has to do with the Attorney General. This is from one of the audience members and I apologize for not getting to it in the first section or segment of our evening. But I'll read the question. Missouri Attorney General authorized an impartial investigation by the Missouri State Highway Patrol of shooting the poodle. I think that has to do with what happened in Sturgeon. Is that right? Thank you. But he refuses to authorize the highway patrol to conduct the same impartial investigation for a citizen, even though Boone County prosecutor requested that. How can you cause Missouri Attorney General to do? To do the, it says rightful, um. I think, uh, how can you cause the Missouri Attorney General to do maybe the right thing?
Okay, I'm not familiar with, I don't think either one of those examples in particular, given the poodle example or the other one. How can you cause the Attorney General to do the right thing? Well, I mean, I tried to as much as I could in the sunshine backlog request. I got the update from people for the first time since November. Um, you know, I had a ballot initiative case against him, um, uh, to try to protect ballot initiative rights and decide when the ballot initiative process begins. Um, so, you know, I'm not afraid to take action against them. Speaking out in public, I've been speaking out in public against all these transgressions, you know, representing, um, members of the legislature in a death and private defamation case after the Kansas City shooting. Um, uh, not going after, um, things like the, uh, poker games, basically they have in gas stations because there's some funding on the side. Um, uh, representing Elon Musk in cases, wasting their money across the board. Um, speaking out in public because we're not used to our Attorney General's office being weaponized like this. I think that people are just now in the past year or so coming around to realizing how unusual this is and what a weapon it is. I mean, he's more harmful than the governor is these days. You gotta speak out and let people know about what's going on.
Greg Bush, I'll read the question again. Missouri Attorney General authorized an impartial investigation by the State Highway Patrol of shooting the poodle. But he refuses to authorize the highway patrol to conduct the same impartial investigation for citizens, even though it was Missouri AG to do the right thing.
I have two teenagers at home. You can't make people do something. I mean, you just can't. So how do we make somebody or how do we change somebody's behavior? I think it's what, like, ultimately what the question, irrespective of what that is. Um, you actually have to build trust with them. The other thing that you can do is show them that there's overwhelming support for a thing, right? Building a coalition. Um, and actually going down to Jefferson City, it's not one legislator doing these things. It's building a coalition and building that relationship and advocating as big groups in order to move the needle in a plan. So I would, look, I bet Jeff and I, uh, we would change Andrew Bailey's behavior today if we could, right? But neither of us can, and our legislators can't either. You actually have to build relationships.
All right, uh, Greg Bush, you're first on this one. This is my question. I've waited to ask, ask this all night. How far should state government go to keep the Kansas City Chiefs in Missouri?
As far as they can. And what I mean by that is let's enlist the Swifties. So say I feel to, uh, Taylor Swift. Okay, we have to build a coalition, David. We have to build a coalition. This is what I'm saying. I can't think of a bigger coalition than, uh, Taylor Swift fans, uh, and, uh, Kansas City Chiefs fans right now, so.
This to be a serious question. Because we know, if you pay attention, you know what Kansas is doing. So if, if that's your answer and your final answer, that's good. We'll go to Jeff Basinger. What should the state government do to keep the Kansas City Chiefs in Missouri?
I don't think we should have to do as much as Kansas. You know, it's always been our team, I feel like. Uh, I'll be pretty peeved if they move to Kansas. And I think that, um, it wouldn't be a good PR move for the Chiefs. Um, you know, businesses look out for the bottom line. Um, but, you know, uh, a lot of people in Missouri love the Chiefs. Obviously, there would be hard feelings about it. It would be, uh, a move that would be, look like a money grab. Unfortunately, it is a business. Um, I don't think we should have to go as far as Kansas. And I think that, um, you know, the Chiefs have a lot of players on them, um, you know, Mahomes and Kelsey and, um, people like that. Speak out on, on occasionally on social justice issues and all of that. And I think that this is kind of a social justice issue that taxpayers are getting built too much on these stadiums, you know? It's not our job to sit there and pour money out for them when they're already making a lot of money. And I think, I hope that that message just kind of hits home and plays a part in their decision-making. I hope we don't have to go too far to keep the Chiefs.
Okay, we'll go to our final question and Jeff Basinger, you're first on this. What's the number one reason a voter should vote for you? That makes you stand out from your opponent?
Oh, I, I think that my legal background is my, my number one reason. I think that I know, you know, lawyers, uh, need laws written correctly because we're the ones that end up enforcing them. Um, I think that I can try to use my, my legal background to draft things correctly, avoid problems. Um, try to reach solutions that make sense, maybe uncover ideas that people weren't thinking of. And I think I'm, I'm not afraid to speak up for the truth, you know? I'm a fighter. I'll take action directly. I take action, ask, making um, the sunshine request of Bailey. I'll speak out and if somebody's not telling the truth on, on, on Twitter and whatnot, so. Um, I've got a good legal background, which is a help. We have a lot of problems that we need to pay attention, not just one subject area and all, and all fight for you and fight for the truth.
All right. Thank you. Greg Bush, same question to you. What is the number one reason a voter should vote for you? In addition to that, we're asking you, what makes you stand out from your opponent?
Uh, well, I hope the voters do, uh, end up choosing me. Um, I am a fellow in the Missouri Nurses Association Advocacy Institute. Which means I have been down at the Capitol advocating for nurses, advocating for our patients, advocating for healthcare. Um, one of the things that the nurses were able to accomplish this last year is we built a, uh, uh, a coalition that defeated the anti-DBI really bad, uh, anti-DBI legislation. Um, I've been down there talking with, uh, other legislators. Um, I've been listening to them. Um, that is a thing that makes me a little bit different. Uh, this is not about writing laws, although the legislator passes laws and they have staff that write them. This is about building relationships. This is about listening and this is about finding out at the core of what is needed in the community. And then active in the community, listening to working families, going door to door, listening to voters. Uh, and being the only nurse in the state House of Representatives is something that was really attractive to the voters that I've met.
I could guess that both of you feel like you've already made your closing statement, but this is your free minute. So Greg Bush, you get first crack at this. You got sixty more seconds for whatever you want.
Good thanks, David. I appreciate that.
You want to sing a Taylor Swift song or something?
I mean, just to take that back a little bit, I, I, we should not be bribing people to like, that we should not be being held hostage by multi-billion dollar industries uh, as a state. Uh, so I, I, I didn't know that that was a serious question, like how far a, a legislator would go to do this. Uh, but anyway, thank you, David. Uh, again, this is a, a temple of the First Amendment. Uh, here in the library. It's really been a privilege, um, going out and meeting voters and thank you all for coming, uh, tonight as well. Again, I think it's going to take somebody down in, uh, in Jefferson City that has a head, heart and spine. Um, no surprise that I use that imagery. I think we need to head to make sure that we know exactly where the threats are and how to overcome them. The heart, which is the resilience and the passion to push them over the goal line and a spine to stand up when something is not going the right way. I've been down there. I've listened. I've testified in front of committees. Um, and I really hope that take a really deep thought and think of what a nurse could bring to the legislature. Uh, and what kind of values that we all share.
Judge Basinger, sixty seconds for your closing comments tonight.
Thank you very much. All right. And thank you for everybody for being here. Um, I hope to be your representative, you know? I don't want to represent special interests down there. I want to represent all Missourians. I think that I focused on my legal background and the technical parts of it. Now a lawyer is somebody who represents everybody. I'm not going down there to represent lawyers. I'm going down there to use the tools that I have learned to help everybody. And whether that's on public education, making sure our schools are stood up for, um, whether it's standing up to bullies like Andrew Bailey. If he's going after our friends and family, I can speak up on that. Um, well, you know, so it's exam, uh, using my skills for examination and committees and all that. You know, I have examined um, doctors, people of their own, medical organizations, uh, accountants, engineers. Getting to the bottom of problems, asking the right questions. I love asking questions. It's one of the best parts of being a lawyer. This part's harder for me. I love, I love trying to get to the bottom of solutions and you can do that with any. You're supposed to have skills to do that with any subject matter as a lawyer, and I think I do. Um, I want to, I want to help everybody, fight for everybody. It's going to take all of us. So let's go, um, go vote and, uh, get this done in November too.
These two are the Democratic candidates for State Representative District fifty on the ballot for the primary election and Jeff Basinger, Greg Bush. We thank you both for being here. And our next few candidates for the Democratic nomination for Boone County Chair will come up to the platform. We'll be back in two minutes. Thank you. Very much for joining us this evening for this League of Women Voters, uh, Boone, Columbia, Boone County, uh, Forum. uh, forum on contested races for the August primary race. Of course, you can vote before then. You can do early voting, and there are several locations. You can go on the website for League of Women Voters to find out more about that, or contact the Boone County Clerk. And also at the League of Women Voters website, you'd be able to get their election and voter guide. It's very helpful. And you can do that here if you're in the fringe room at the Columbia Public Library tonight with the issues on it. We're moving into the Democratic nomination for Boone County Sheriff. The Sheriff's Department mission statement is lead the fight to prevent crime and injustice, enforce the law fairly, and defend the rights of all. Partner with the people we serve to secure and promote safety in our communities. The Sheriff's Department is made up of three branches, the jail or detention, enforcement, and services. Dwayne Carey and Charles Blair are the Democratic candidates. Each candidate will have a time for a two-minute opening statement, followed by several League of Women voter and audience questions. If you're participating tonight via Zoom, then use the chat section there to get your questions, and they will be relayed to me up here at the front in the fringe room of the library. We have a warning sign and a stop sign that will enforce the time limits. We're gonna go uh, in the order of the ballot names that you would see on the ballot, and Dwayne Carey is first, so welcome. And you've got two minutes to make your opening statement.
I am Dwayne Carey. I am your Boone County Sheriff and have been for the last nineteen and a half years. Um, I wanna thank the league. This is my third uh, forum that we've done. The last time, Ari, we uh, didn't have an opponent there, and so I had to go it alone. So I'm excited that we have uh, a good discussion tonight. Um, I'm a little bit unique in the, in the candidates that you've heard or will hear, is that I'm not gonna tell you what I think I'm gonna do. I'm gonna tell you what I've done and what we're doing. And so what we've done is, uh, over the last nineteen and a half years, we've created a crisis intervention teams uh, to have better interactions with our, our mental health consumers, internet crimes task force, so we can protect our children from sexual predators, uh, a direct patrol unit, uh, regional canine training, our regional concept, uh, training concept's been around since oh five and oh six. And so um, those are some of the highlights from the past. What we're working on currently right now is a new training center and tactical firearms range. I am a big believer that better training leads to better interaction and outcome between law enforcement and the individuals that we're dealing with. Um, childcare is another thing that uh, we're getting ready to introduce. San Diego Police Department's the only other agency in the country that does childcare, excuse me, for first responders. Um, but we're gonna introduce that here in Boone County, uh, and so that will be on our campus as well. And so just a lot of great things. I've got a dynamite group of people. Um, you know, I think staffing, we're like three openings. And enforcement, we're actually having to really slow down and turn folks away to make sure that they fit into our culture. Uh, basically, the model that we live by is we treat everyone like we would like our mother to be treated. It works very well for us. And the most important thing that I'll share with you today is we're the only sheriff's office in the state of Missouri with two national accreditations, one on the enforcement side and one on the detention side, and that tells you a lot about what we've done in the last nineteen and a half years. Thank you.
And Carey, thank you. Charles Blair, your opening statement, please. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Charles Blair, and uh, my qualifications to be sheriff is I have thirty-six years of law enforcement experience. I've worked for four different agencies. I have a uh, doctor degree in criminal justice and a Class A Missouri Peace Officer's license. The reason I wanted to be sheriff is when I worked at the sheriff's office, I saw money, resources, and time being wasted on programs, equipment, and resources that did not improve the quality of services to the public, nor the efficiency of public safety. As a matter of fact, I saw programs neglected or eliminated that provided more opportunities for improved quality and quantity of service. Programs that increase the workforce at no cost and provide a source of, for new hires. Talking about the Reserve Deputy Program and the Explorer Program. In addition, the School Resources Officer Program was eliminated. This is an important position that keeps our precious children safe while in school. It's also a great way for our children to interact with law enforcement in a positive way, possibly paving for some of them to actually even want a career in law enforcement. So ask yourself, why did we vote for a sheriff? It's because the sheriff works for the people, unlike a police chief who is appointed by a city or town council. And the chief works and uh, enforces the laws and regulations of those city councils or gets fired. The sheriff enforces the laws based on what the citizens want, and if they don't get what they want, then they have to reelect the new sheriff. A sheriff is also responsible to ensure the citizens don't have their federal and state constitution rights violated. Uh, when I was working at the sheriff's office, I saw a lot of people having their Second Amendment rights violated without due process. Their Sixth Amendment uh, rights uh, violated for no speedy trials, and uh, their Eighth Amendment for not having reasonable bail.
Thank you, Charles Blair. We'll start with questions, and I'll start with one from the League of Women Voters. And Mr. Blair, you're first on this one. What are the most important skills to be as successful as a sheriff for all of Boone County?
The most successful skills is being a good leader. If your people don't believe in uh, you as far as setting an example, then they're not going to follow you. And uh, unfortunately, I saw a lot of turnover, high turnover at the sheriff's office when I was there, which creates a really bad problem for consistency of service and quality of service. When you're constantly training new people, um, the quality of service just isn't there, because people are constantly learning. And nobody also wants to work under a, a thing of, um, it's an at-will environment, and you don't, if you don't like it, to leave or go somewhere else. And I saw a lot of people leaving and for something simple as like twenty-five cents an hour. When you spend a lot of time learning the job, going through all the training and stuff that it takes to get hired, it should be a career, not a stepping stone.
And the same question for Dwayne Carey. What are the most important skills to be successful as sheriff for all of Boone County?
Leadership is obviously a big one. Um, so obviously, I've served as a frontline leader at the Boone County Sheriff's Office. Again, my career spanning, you know, thirty-five years there, uh, corporal, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, all the way up to being elected your sheriff, right? And so the, the problem with my opponent is he's been a patrol officer his entire career. He's never had any supervision experience. He doesn't understand what it takes to be a CEO of a company. And so oftentimes, when I'm down at the Capitol trying to get money for childcare or uh, working on some legislation, whether it be mental health, rental standards, whatever the case might be, um, I have to have a shop that will run. So I surround myself with good people, a great admin team. You don't hear anything about the Boone County Sheriff's Office, it's because of the people that I have there. And so um, we, we put this great team together, and I'll tell you this, too, just to be honest with you. Again, going back to our motto, we treat everyone like we would like our mother to be treated. It's fail-proof. And if you don't treat people that way, you're not gonna work for me. That's just the bottom line. And so that's why we get a handful of complaints a year, um, and other than that, it's great. And I'll tell you this, if my employees had an issue with me, we wouldn't have had forty people walking door to door last week and another forty-five walking the same.
Dwayne Carey, this will be your, your question for the first answer. It has to do with about pursuits. The question is, last week, a motorist died at Providence Road in Business Loop Seventy after a deputy initiated a chase because of a traffic violation investigation. Should police, in this case, and a sheriff also, as um, initiate a chase in town for traffic violation?
Yeah, and so, and thanks, Dan, for that question. We're um, we're always, always looking at the factors associated with those pursuits, because there's so much liability with, with, you know, chases. The, the issue now is a lot of agencies are going away from pursuits. And so then bad guys know that some agencies are not chasing, and so we're getting into this where we're seeing more and more pursuits because they don't know what law enforcement agency's behind them. So the particular pursuit that Dan's talking about is uh, relatively low speed. We're evaluating traffic conditions, the speed, um, all of those things are going in, supervisors monitoring that. Um, and I just hate to say, but unfortunately, sometimes tra, you know, tragic things happen. Um, but the Boone County Sheriff's Office is not going to stop chasing. We have policy based on best practices through Kalia, um, and so we show proof of that, and, and we'll continue to do what we do, uh, trying to enforce those, those laws.
I just wanna make clear that uh, Dwayne Carey knows my name is not Dan. He is referring to Dan Beach, who actually, he knew, provided this question. All right, um, Mr. Blair, the same question to you. I can repeat it if you'd like.
Uh, no, I, I understood the question. So pursuits are a very, um, litigious, litigious uh, activity of the sheriff's, of any law enforcement agency. There's specific guidelines for chasing people. There should be. And anytime that you have just a traffic violation that you're chasing somebody for, and uh, speeds are things where you're going through red lights, you have to look at liability. And liability is that if you're tra, chasing someone for a traffic violation, and that's the only known thing that you're chasing them for, then you probably should look at the time of day, how many people are around, how many lights you're going through, the speed, and if it's something that's gonna put the public safety in danger and outweighs the actual traffic violation, then you should probably stop. There's plenty of cameras out there that you can identify people, and a good investigation can probably find that driver.
Charles Blair, we'll start with you. I'm gonna try to make these two questions relate. They, they are related. I'm trying to make it into one question. The uh, yes or no part of this question is, do you think funds collected from fines or tickets issued by law enforcement should be used to fund the retirement pensions of law enforcement? And there's another questioner in the audience says we'll be asking November to support court employees and sheriff's pensions through fees on people caught up in the court system. Why is this necessary and appropriate? So it has to do with the same, it has to do with funding pensions through fines and tickets and also court fees, it looks to me.
Okay, so I don't think that any law enforcement agency should be benefiting off of enforcement of writing tickets or making arrests or anything like that. As far as the courts uh, taking money from persons that are processed or in the court system to find pensions or anything like that, I don't agree with that either. Uh, departments, they negotiate uh, a pension plan, and what you do is you take your employee and you say, this is what you're gonna be hired at, this is what your benefit is at. We're gonna take X amount of percentage of your pay and put it away for retirement, and the county, state, whatever will match and put that in there. It should never be the uh, based on the criminal justice system, that based on, by a rescue or to give, write you a ticket, that I'm gonna be, you know, padding my pockets or padding, you know, the retirement of anybody. That's just wrong.
Dwayne Carey, same sort of two-part question for you.
Sure. Uh, I actually sit on the Missouri Sheriff's Department Board, the statewide board, um, and I will disagree with that. So here's the issue. Nineteen eighty-three, the Missouri State Legislature passed a law that a three-dollar fee would be co, collected from all court costs to go to the sheriff's retirement. So this is nineteen eighty-three, so we're talking like five decades. In twenty twenty-one, it was deemed unconstitutional by the Missouri Supreme Court. We're searching for a funding source um, to keep that fund going, right? Because we have people that are very long in the tooth that are dependent on that sheriff's retirement. The prosecuting attorney's office, they're meeting the same fate that the sheriff's did, and so our prosecutors uh, basically are going to, to fall within this same thing. So when you see that in November, it's sheriffs and prosecutors. What you need to know about this is if you do not fund the retirement for these two positions, you're not going to have qualified candidates that would run for that. Boone County is a sheriff county only. I wouldn't have anyone that would run for sheriff because they would lose their retirement, and they wouldn't have one to go to.
We'll start with Dwayne Carey on this question, and it refers to something that came up while we were talking to um, the first two candidates for state legislature position. If fentanyl is as bad as earlier speakers said, would you support free Narcan and drug testing kits for addicts?
Well, it's already being done. Um, so yeah, I mean, the city Columbia is doing that well. It is bad. I mean, we partnered with uh, Health Department and other organizations. Uh, we provide our, our data. Um, I think the latest thing that I saw within the last three months, we'd had like forty-three reported cases. So yes, it's, it's a terrible thing, and Narcan is already uh, being provided. We use it in the jail as well. And so, yeah, I think that, that is something that's already being done.
Charles Blair, same question for you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Fentanyl is as bad as a, earlier speakers have said tonight, would you support free Narcan and drug testing kits for addicts?
Yes, it is. I, I do know that the Sheriff's Department, when they release people, they offer if they want Narcan. The issue I saw with that at the sheriff's office was they don't give it to the deputies to carry in their patrol cars. They'll give it to the people who are released from custody, but the deputies aren't carrying it in their patrol cars. They're usually the first people on scene of overdoses, and that would make a big difference in saving someone's life. If the deputies had it in their own cars, they'll give it to detainees when they leave, but they won't even give it to their own deputies to use. Um, and I find that kinda sad.
We'll start with this question again from the audience tonight, for Charles Blair first. The question is, presently, there is no internal affairs at the Sheriff's Department, and the case a citizen has solid evidence against a sheriff deputy to which independent legal authority a citizen can complain to and present the evidence. The question is, which independent legal authority can a citizen complain to and present the evidence?
That's a good question. I, I, since I've uh, put in my candidacy for sheriff, I've actually been contacted by a lot of people who have said that uh, they've been wronged by the sheriff's office, and when they try and file complaints, that nothing ever happens. And when they go beyond the sheriff's office and try and find other agencies that will help them, like the prosecutor's office or um, um, I'm trying to think, uh, the marshal's office here, nobody helps them. As a matter of fact, they've been um, even uh, persecuted by those agencies. Uh, and what I would do is, this governor just signed legislation for it, is uh, do a citizens review board, and that's what I would want, uh, where they could go and plead their case to the citizen, where it takes it out of the hands of law enforcement, gets it somewhere.
Uh, Dwayne Carey, would you like for me to repeat this?
Yeah, and I appreciate these guys with the setup questions. Go ahead.
Presently, there is no internal affairs at Sheriff's Department, and the case a citizen has solid evidence against the sheriff deputy to which independent legal authority can a citizen complain to and present the evidence?
All right, so again, nationally accredited agency, Kalia accredited. We have internal affairs. We have to identify our internal affairs team every year. Uh, we investigate all types of complaints. Um, so I mean, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, again, I appreciate you guys asking the questions, but we have internal affairs. We have to show proof that we do investigations. We might have, and, and think about this, fifty or sixty thousand contacts that we have annually. We might have ten complaints a year, ten. So we're trying to make it look like the sheriff's office uh, is, you know, an, an agency that's having all kinds of difficulties, and that we treat people poorly and all that, but Kalia accredited, you have to show proof. We have internal affairs. All of that is in place, so you can trust in that.
We'll start with Dwayne Carey on this one. We hear a lot about community policing for the Columbia Police Department. They've talked about it for many, many years. What's part, what parts of community policing at Penny could fit a sheriff's department?
The school resource officers is a big one, right? And so uh, my opponent indicated earlier that I cut that program. That's just simply not true. So any, any municipality that has a law enforcement agency, I have them provide that SRO. Anyone that doesn't, we provide that. So Town of Harrisburg, uh, and Town of Sturgeon, we provide our SRO there. So it's a great, um, it's a great way to interact with kids. We actually did away with the Dare program because we wanted to extend our contact with kids longer. Um, and I don't wanna say on SRO is too long, but now we're doing a sixth grade program, a seventh grade program, an eighth grade program. So we've expanded on that. So it's a great uh, COP type ac, activity. The other thing I'll tell you is just the way we treat people, right? It does not matter who you are, what race, what gender, whatever. We're treating everybody like we'd like our mother to be treated, and again, it's fail-proof, and it works so well. And if more agencies, more businesses, more, everybody would do that, uh, we would find that we're in a better society.
And Charles Blair, same question for you.
Community policing. Okay, so I keep hearing my opponent talk about Kalia, how important that certification is. Just let you know, it's a private company. It's not a government agency. You pay for your certification. So if you're So if you're paying for a certification, I don't know what good it really is. I used to work for the high patrol. One of the persons who actually uh started Kalia is a former high patrol person and that's what he did in, he created it in his retirement to make money. So, okay, for what export? Uh, Explorer program is a good way to get the kids interested in law enforcement. It's been eliminated. Reserve program. It lets community members become members of the sheriff's department and actually work the road with deputies and have some kind of interaction and say with what happens in the in the community. That's been eliminated. So those are all things I'd like to bring back the Explorer program and the Reserve program.
The uh Lake's time schedule says to end questions at seven fifteen, so we have to cut off the questions there, and I apologize for not getting to every single question, but it was a lively participation with questions from the audience. So we'll go to sixty-second closing remarks. We'll do it flipping the order that we did at the opening. So Charles Blair, you have sixty seconds to wrap things up.
Okay. So if you are tired of having your uh rights violated and nobody hearing or listening to you once they've been right violated, go ahead and stay with candidate, you know, or tier to my right. If you want to change on your constitutional, state and federal being upheld like every law enforcement officer supposed to do, they're supposed to, they swear an oath to uphold and defend the constitution. And there's a lot of them, not just with this agency, but other agencies that aren't doing. And that's a problem. Um, if you want your money spent on useless programs like Kalia or uh at one point, a COVID uh decontamination thing that costs probably thousands of dollars that broke down and even after states said, don't use it, they continue to use it. Like you're, you know, if you want your tax dollars wasted on stuff that doesn't improve public safety or uh crime prevention, I'm not the person that you vote for.
Dwayne Carey, sixty seconds to wrap up your evening.
Okay, so we had five advisors, three explorers. You tell me if that makes sense to keep that program up and going. Kids are too busy with sports, other activities. Um, the reserve division, we were down to two people. Uh, when I started, it was a hundred and twenty hours to get certification. Now at the local LETI, it's over seven hundred hours. You can't get people to go pay five thousand dollars for Academy. Um, again, I I covered the SROs. Narcan, you can't keep it in a take-home car. Yesterday was like a hundred and ten. And I don't want them taking it into their house where their kids are. So we don't provide it to our patrol deputies. We have fine county firefighters that beat us to about ninety-nine percent of the calls that we go to. So that's why we don't do Narcan. Um, so let me tell you this, and I touched on this earlier. So I did this by myself back in twenty twenty because my opponent was a MAGA Republican. He's now apparently, for whatever reason, has become a Democrat and he showed up tonight. Um, he doesn't have any any type, any type of supervisory or line experience. Uh, he just has line experience, no management experience, no jail experience, no budget experience. I could go on and on. The Democratic Party did not set accept his filing fee. And they have publicly endorsed me as as to be your sheriff for the next four years and maybe eight years. If he wants to run as an independent in four more years, I'll still be around. He can run as an independent there. Thank you. I'd like for you to vote for me on August sixth. Thank you.
Dwayne Carey and Charles Blair, they are one more portion of our evening. And again, we appreciate those who are attending in person at the Columbia Public Library fringe room and also those who are participating through the booth. And also those of you who are listening live on KOPN and KFRU. So now we're moving into the portion of the evening where it's issues. On the August sixth ballot, there are two Missouri constitutional amendments passed by the Missouri Legislature and put on the August sixth ballot by Governor Parson. Marie Skala, President of the League of Women Voters is here. She's going to present information on these two ballot issues. And following her presentation, we have representatives from the City of Columbia to present information on Columbia Proposition One. And the handouts with ballot issue information are available to our audience members that are here in the fringe room. I'll turn this over to the President of the League of Women Voters, Columbia Boone County, Marie Skala.
Thank you very much, David. And um I want to thank Carol Schreiber for having compiled, done the research and compiled the information that I'm going to be sharing. Our normal custom is to whenever there is a a ballot issue like this, to do just what we've done with the candidates, and that is to give an opponent and a proponent the opportunity to speak. But in this case, neither of, we were not able to identify organized groups in favor of or against either one piece amendments. So um we're just simply going to try to walk through them and let you know what they say. Um, I would start by noting that uh the two amendments I'm talking about are are each constitutional amendments to the Missouri Constitution. And they would each uh change the authority for a function such as in the first case taxation, in the second case, uh budgeting from the local level to the state. So um that they do have that in common. The the first one, and there is a handout available in the back of the room that has this same text on it. So if you want to you didn't catch one on the way in, catch one on the way out. Um, the first one is Missouri Amendment One, which is property tax exemption for childcare statutes. The official ballot title reads as follows. Shall the Missouri Constitution be amended to allow places where individual corporations, organizations, and associations provide childcare outside of the child's home to be exempt from property tax? This is intended to make childcare more available, which would support the well-being of children, families, the workforce, and society as a whole. The second part of the official ballot titles goes on to say state governmental entities estimate the state's blind pension fund could have annual lost revenue of up to four hundred thousand dollars. Local governments expect an unknown physical fiscal impact. So um the language this fair ballot language appears on the Secretary of State's website. It will not be on the ballot per se. But if you want to review it, it's on the handout or you can go through SOS dot Bo dot dub and and read it. According to the Secretary of State's analysis, a yes vote will amend the Missouri Constitution to grant the General Assembly statutory authority to exempt all property, real and personal, used primarily for the care of a child outside of his or her home by general law. An assessing authority may be authorized by general law to exempt from the assessment levy and collection of taxes such portion of the property, such individual corporation, organization, or association that is used primarily for such. So there's really two parts to it. The state could pass laws that would exempt all property, all property that's used primarily for childcare. And then assessing authorities, which would mean more accountable may be authorized by the general law to exempt portions such property. Um, again, the fair ballot language continues, a no vote will, oh. Yeah, a no vote will not amend the Missouri Constitution and childcare facilities will continue to be assessed levy. That was number one. Proponents say these are, this is information that um we gleaned from published information about the amendment outside of the Secretary of State's website. Opponents say there is a severe childcare shortage in Missouri and that this measure would increase its availability. They also say it would allow parents to remain in the workforce to benefit families, employers, and communities. Opponents say the measure would take four hundred thousand dollars from them. Oh, I forgot to advance. Opponents say the measure would take four hundred thousand dollars from Missouri's blind pension funds and decrease revenue for government entities that rely on property taxes such as schools, libraries, and county governments. And then we um requested some additional information from Boone County just to see if they had any kind of estimate of the impact uh if passed. And I learned that if the amendment is passed by voters and if the General Assembly implements the property tax exemption, they're going to have to pass a law or the statute happen. The Boone County Assessor estimates the loss of revenue in Boone County. And I'm not going to read the whole mathematical formula. You can see that there, but the bottom line is that an estimated loss of revenue of three hundred eighty thousand dollars to the county. Um, please bear in mind, this does not take into account any home daycare operations. So this would be only for the childcare centers. And um another thing to note is that that three hundred and eighty thousand dollar figure does not include the impact on other taxing entities such as school districts, fire districts. So that would be in addition to. And that was Amendment One. Amendment Four also on to be on the ballot is a Kansas City police funding requirement. The official ballot ballot title says, shall the Missouri Constitution be amended to authorize laws passed before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six that increase minimum funding for a police force established by a state board of police commissioners to ensure such police force has additional resources to serve its community? This would authorize a law passed in twenty twenty-two increasing required funding by the City of Kansas City for police department requests from twenty percent of general revenue to twenty-five percent. An increase of thirty-eight million, seven hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars. Though the city previously provided that level of funding voluntarily. No other state or local governmental entities estimate costs for savings. And this would, this would apply only to Kansas City. Kansas City is the only police department that is controlled by a state commission appointed by the government. Therefore, this amendment would only apply to them. Amendment Four was originally approved by Missouri voters in twenty twenty-two. So if this sounds familiar, it has been on the ballot before. It was approved with a sixty-three percent maturity. However, the ballot language did not refer to Kansas City, Kansas City Police Department. And therefore, um, the mayor of Kansas City subsequently filed lawsuit uh arguing that the law requiring the city to spend more money on the police was unconstitutional. And in April of this year, the Missouri State Supreme Court ruled that because the amendment's financial estimate was misleading and city estimates were ignored, a new election on the amendment gets beat out. And that was scheduled for this August. So that's why it's on the ballot. Proponents say that twenty twenty-one efforts by the Kansas City Council to designate forty-two million dollars within the police budget for community and intervention programs to reduce crime were jeopardizing public safety. Opponents say state control mandating how Kansas City will spend a significant portion of its budget is political overreach and takes away the right of local officials and taxpayers to make these decisions. That in a nutshell is the is the wording that you're going to see on the ballot and some of the backup wording provided by the Secretary of State. The comments from both proponents of there, yeah, there is not, there is no two or three, for some reason we have Amendment One.
Maybe we'll see those at another time. I think it's interesting the way Amendment Four, our city representatives, if they would come up at this time. Well, we do not take a break in between our presentations. We'll have our representative or tips. Are you solo tonight?
Or their bodyguards?
Yeah. I thought they were here to make sure we didn't overstep this room. Um, anyway, you can find out more information about these through the League of Women Voters or see a repeat of this and their voter's guide. Now, um let me get to the introduction of our guest here. This is Shane Creach, Columbia Public Works Director, correct? I don't think I've ever met you. I'm David. Nice to meet you. And um he is going to help us understand more about Columbia Proposition One, which also shows up on the August ballot. And so um we will be able to take some clarifying questions for him through our chat organization or um chat facility or from those who again, write your questions on the index cards. But Shane Creach, welcome. Appreciate you being here.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. Self-organized here. Um, again, I'm Shane Creach. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Columbia. Um I have a lot of slides and I'm going to go through them really quick. I wanted to have the slides. We could go back if there's any questions. Um I'm going to provide a little history on the city's capital improvement sales tax, provide an update on our current sales tax projects and discuss what we've included in our proposed project list for the next ballot. Should citizens vote to renew the tax for the for this uh this time. Uh, the current tax is a quarter cent. It runs for ten years and expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, council approved the ballot language in May, which will go to the go on the August ballot requesting the tax be renewed for another ten years. Um, historically, and proposed with this one, Public Works gets approximately seventy-five percent of the funds, but police and fire are getting the other twenty-five percent. Uh, this next ballot, if passed, combined with the city's use tax, is estimated to bring in just over eighty-eight million dollars. And you combine that with the development fees that we charge with uh building permits and things like that. And the county road uh tax funds, we we estimate a total of just under a hundred and twenty-six million dollars put towards projects. Um, we will cover the listed projects in more detail, but this gives you a little bit of an understanding of what we've been working on for the last ten years. Each of these projects is either completed in construction or in design current. Um, in this most recent tax, we started listing what we refer to as major maintenance projects. Uh, these are projects that we can do in more established areas where we don't anticipate the need to widen, but can leave the area looking essentially brand new. This also helps us extend our payment preservation program to other areas. Um, as you can see, um Range Line and Walnut are already complete and Garth is scheduled for construction next year. Um, this program has proven to be well-received for proposing it to continue with this next ballot. Um, we've completed several intersection uh projects with one to go. Uh, we anticipate improving the intersection of Fairview and Chapel Hill with a roundabout in twenty twenty-six. Um, the Ash Street project listed here is a good example of why we don't specifically list projects um in the ballot, in the ballot language. Um, during the public improvement process, this project transitioned from intersection to pro- the intersection projects along Ash to a to a non-motorized project with construction anticipated in twenty twenty-five. Uh, each of these intersections will see some pedestrian improvements, but will remain as stop control. Uh, we've completed three major roadway projects with the biggest one yet to go, Forum Boulevard from Chapel Hill Road to Woodrail. We anticipate construction of that one in twenty twenty-six. It includes widening Forum to four lanes, pedways on both sides of the road, and two roundabouts. Um, here's a list of sidewalk projects um either completed or in the works. We've been very successful leveraging MoDOT and um they call CBBG grants to make our money go farther. Um, we typically use the city's sidewalk master plan as our guide for project ideas. Um, with so many areas without sidewalk, this helps drive the project discussions, projects that have more of a citywide impact. Uh, the slide covers some of the other annual funds in this current project list. Um, the annual city-state-county projects fund has allowed us to do more with the money we have uh via cost share. Um, each of these projects is now complete with the exception of Route A and Old Plank Road intersection, which we anticipate to be under construction in twenty twenty-five. Um, we've completed a, we've also completed a variety of traffic calming projects over the past ten years with the capital improvement sales tax. Uh, we, we started with sixty-six projects um in this um to determine this ballot list, which we collected from past um city council requests and staff expertise. Uh, that list was narrowed down to twenty-five projects based on several factors and major maintenance projects were added in as well. Um, some of the factors included safety, um the city's climate action and adaptation plan, and the city's long-range transportation. Um, some of the factors included safety, uh, the city's climate action and adaptation plan and the city's long range transportation. Um, once we had our project list, we used um, a document called the Highway Safety Manual. To help determine a ranking for the projects because we knew we wouldn't have enough money to do them all. Uh, the Highway Safety Manual allows us to analyze roadways and determine. Which had the greatest potential to increase safety with our proposed improvements compared to their existing conditions. Um, you might note that the total cost estimate for those projects, eighteen projects is just over a hundred million dollars. Uh, the public works portion of the sales tax is estimated a little over ninety four million dollars. In other words, you're going to have to guess. Um, after discussions with council, we arrived at these fourteen projects. Um, the differences between this slide and the previous one is Rock Boree was removed at council request. And Creasy Springs was removed due to just total remaining funds. It's a, it's very expensive projects. We also, there's two, there's two sections of Sinclair Road that we looked at. Uh, we flip-flop the south section of Sinclair for the north section, which is currently seeing the construction of a new school. Which gives us three in this corridor, uh, all within mile and a half of each other. Uh, the construction of a major subdivision and its location, and it's also the location of a public works's um, new proposed new south fault. Um, Clark Lane is key because it's impacted by the improved I seventy project and it's ranked as the number one safety improvement project that we looked at. Therefore, there's hope that some of the needed work will be completed by, by MoDOT. Um, the city is also pursuing what is called a Safe Streets for All Grant for this project. Um, success in either one of those areas will allow us to use this money on other needed projects, possibly one of the eighteen projects that um. Didn't make the final project list. Um, in general, the intersection projects that are on our list are roundabout candidates, which would include sidewalk and lighting improvements as needed. Um, the intersection of State Farm Parkway and Knife on Boulevard is just one such example. Um, I will also highlight Fairview and Worley. I think this is a, a project that improves safety. And help um, through the, the offset intersection. We would, we will, we'd be able to eliminate that with this project. Um, and improve pedestrian access across Worley. There's not too many places to cross in that particular area. Um, here's the Sinclair project that I talked about a little earlier. Uh, the developer of the subdivision under construction along this roadway as part of the development agreement provided this. The city, the land we plan to construct the South Salt Dome on, that's a tract immediately south of Mill Creek Elementary School. Um, as part of that agreement, the city took on some of the roadway improvements we know are necessary. And that predated public, plenty of public schools deciding to build a middle richer school next to the existing Donald Middle School. Therefore, we see that project is extremely important sooner rather than later. Um, we've included four major maintenance projects. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, these allow us to do more comprehensive work and extend our pavement preservation funding, which comes from a different funding source. Uh, one of those projects is State Farm Parkway from Veterans United to Grindstone. And I always say this picture does the talking for me. Um, another one is Fay Street from Wilkes to Business Loop Seventy. Similar thing, picture does all the talking. Here's an example of some of the possible cost share projects. Uh, the main reason I provided this slide at council was to illustrate the cost of some of the projects that get mentioned frequently. Uh, two examples are uh, potential Scott Boulevard and I seventy interchange. And the Stadium Boulevard Extension Interstate Seventy. Uh, both along with, of all these projects are great projects. However, the city clearly needs partners to do them. So really the question is how much money do you set aside hoping to get a partner? And so that's what makes a lot of this difficult. Um, the traffic calming and traffic safety funds totaled up to about the same as the last ballot. However, we've moved more money into traffic safety. They illustrate the emphasis on that at the federal level. The city has been awarded two Safe Streets for All Grants to date for Vision Zero planning projects. And we have an application in for an implementation project or a construction project while it's our plan. Uh, we also have a significant list of mid-block pedestrian crossing project requests, many near schools. This next slide, um. We also have just over four million dollars dedicated to sidewalks. Um, as mentioned earlier, we typically use the city's sidewalk master plan for project ideas and leverage MoDOT and. A community development block grant funds to make that money go as far as possible. Um, as I said, here's a list of mid-block crossing projects we have interested in completing. Uh, the first five are near schools. Um, and we're reaching out to Columbia Public Schools for assistance prioritizing them. See if they have any funds or know of any grant funds available to help our money go a little farther. Um, one thing that's real difficult when you have multiple projects located next to schools, deciding which one goes first. And so Columbia Public Schools helping me with that. Helps me um, pick the ones they want and we can all be in that together. Um, this, uh, for reference, this is, this map shows the locations of projects in the city's sidewalk master plan. Quite a good percentage of them are located in Ward Four, but they're, they're fairly well scattered across. Um, the street reconstruction fund, this is to be here, allows us to pursue objects that come up during the ballot term. And provides us some contingency for listed street projects. Um, as probably you all know, uh, COVID and supply chain issues have caused major increases in construction costs. Therefore, we think it's prudent um, that we build in some additional contingency with this ballot. Uh, corridor preservation allows us to pursue a property that becomes available for a future roadway project. Um, it's also common now for citizens to desire a street tree along major roadway projects. This fund allows us to pursue that by contractors that specialize in trees. After the roadway contractor is complete. So a lot of these roads that you'll see listed. The, 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 the major roadway projects, we've come in after that to plant street trees instead of having that done during construction. Um, the city also has an urban forest master plan that we follow for proper maintenance of, as our urban forest continues to grow. Might imagine engineered, not the best at maintaining the trees. So I, I need somebody, an expert to do that. Lucky enough, the city has a city arborist that's really good at that. Uh, this product. This project sets aside money for improvements to our North Salt Dome, shown in that picture. And an additional phase to the new um, South Salt Dome location I mentioned earlier, which is going to be just south of Mill Creek Elementary School. Um, there's also funding to help us finally move forward on a comprehensive renovation to our, our main maintenance and operations facility that's over on Lakeview. Um, the city did plumbinarily, plumbinarily receive a federal grant for the transit side of that same facility. While some of that money can be used to help us with like, for instance, our fleet operations. Uh, we can't use this money to move forward on the street operations side. And the, the fleet operation side. So this money helps us combine it with that federal money to do a complete renovation. Um, uh, this slide shows the Griston Building Master Plan. So this is kind of. Final project. Once we have all that money in place, we can do that work. This slide shows phase one of the South Salt Dome. So just to the top of the page, there is Mill Creek Elementary School. Basically, it's just what we need to have a South Salt Dome um. On that south side of town. Right now, my only salt dome is on the north side of town, up off of Range Line and Big Bear. So when we're fighting snow and we're down close to this end of town, we're out of salt. I gotta go all the way back. And so this is a, we call, we consider this a citywide improvement in that. I can, I can radiate out from two locations. And so. While it's in a particular ward, I would consider it a citywide. And so this is kind of, as you do with anything, we did a master plan for that area. As the city continued to grow, not only would I need salt dome in that location, but a place to have crews come out from as the city continued to grow. Right now, we do everything out of the Lakeview site. And so just making sure we, we have a master plan that we can follow as time goes on. Uh, like I said, initially, we just need the salt. So now, obviously, I've got two experts back there if I get, if I get myself in trouble. Um, the fire department proposes funding uh, for fire station number ten. Located near the intersection of Route WW and El Chaparral and the replacement of a variety of fire trucks. Here's an example of how that might play out over the course of the tax. In general, they replace a fire truck uh, just about every year. The fire truck that was replaced typically become the backup. Um, the other thing to remember is when you add a new fire station, you need new fire trucks. So the cost of that fire station includes the equipment that they need to operate a new fire station. The police department proposes renovations to their existing downtown headquarters. Um, the. Heating and air conditioning is at the end of its youthful life and the parking ramp that's above the police station is in need of significant work. Um, I think that building was constructed in the thirties or something like that. So it's, it's time to do something different. Um, while additional revenue will be necessary to complete this project. This will serve as a good placeholder. Um, staff is currently consuming a police space needs assessment, which will guide them. So you have a building like that and we're going to, if it constructs something brand new. It's a matter of what did the police need now in the future? How else can the city use that facility? Maybe it won't just be. You know, maybe it just won't be a police station. Maybe it'll have some other city departments that will grow. Um, so those are the kind of things that we're looking at uh, leading up to um, hiring a consultant and doing a design on. Um, the police department also proposes phase two of the Molly Bowden Neighborhood Leasing Center. Um, the north precinct was built um, in this current um, capital improvement sales tax. But the second level was not built out. And so this puts money, this would give money there to help us complete that uh, building. Um, we, we were planning to do that in this, this ballot, um, but. Uh, we need to expand evidence storage. Um, there's federal changes and requirements. What the, how long the police have to hold evidence. And so they're just busting at the seams of what they have to hold on to. So the police department has a police training facility uh, down south that we're looking into expanding for evidence. All, all that once. So, yeah, in summary, staff met with council in December twenty twenty three to discuss much of which um, you've seen here tonight. Following individual meetings with council members, we had a, we had an additional work session in April of twenty twenty four. And they approved the project list and ballot language in May. Uh, this item will be on the August sixth, twenty twenty four ballot. Um, I would encourage you to go to the website um, listed here. Um, it's our normal website with a backslash and C I S T, capital improvement sales tax. Um, the communications folks have done a good job of putting together a lot of educational material on the, um, on the tax. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, the, the question is.
Go ahead. You got it.
Uh, the intersection of I seventy drive southwest and West Boulevard. Uh, question mark, repairing potholes is the question, not a roundabout. Um, so the capital improvement sales tax is how we have handled so far major projects. As far as pavement preservation is concerned, that's a, that's a different funding source. Um, as far as potholes in a particular intersection, one thing I tell everybody is. There are a lot of roads in town that are modot roads. So one of the first things, a lot of times people ask that question about a road. And it won't, it won't be our road. Um, as far as this one, what I will do is look into. We go out and take a look and for, we get them to go very fast. But it, it's a little bit apples and oranges to talk about potholes and pavement preservation when it comes to um, capital.
Library closes at eight, so we're, we're in danger of being logged in here. But I, there's so much information there. And I think it is, it's, that would be online at the. Como.gov backslash. C I S T, capital improvement sales tax. Uh, if it doesn't pass, how do you, how do you survive? What, what happens? We just go back to uh, dirt roads and.
So, so with all the funding sources, um, the list that we have totaled up to about a hundred and twenty six million dollars. Um, eighty three million dollars of that is what they estimate uh, passage of this uh, sales tax would bring in. There's five million dollars in use tax who passed a year or so ago. There's also development fees and the county has a road, a road tax that we get some of that money. So if this were not to pass, that brings that number from that a hundred and twenty six million to somewhere in the forty millions. Um, so obviously you got to re-prioritize based on what you had there. What I would tell you is one of the reasons I thought it was important to go August was because. The current tax runs through the end of December twenty twenty five. So council could decide to put it back on the ballot when it passed. So that gives us some, some things to talk about. That's the case.
I think it's very interesting and I'll close with this, just as a comment. Looking at what you presented and looking at the chart, I mean, you have a lot of meetings about where this city will be by twenty thirty five. You're trying to anticipate what the needs are. And I think by looking at that gives those of us who are not doing this every day, a pretty good idea of what the anticipation is for Columbia to. Need as far as infrastructure is concerned. By twenty, up to twenty thirty five. So I mean, it's a, it's a prediction game. But it also right now is a statement showing us where we are and where we are moving towards and how we can move there more smoothly. I mean, that's just a statement. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
So our candidate forum has concluded. League of Women Voters thank all the candidate speakers and community members for participating in this forum. The forum has been recorded. It'll be posted in the league and the Columbia Public Library websites. Thanks to Lauren Williams over here for what she has done and her tech crew. Tom Holmes back there in the corner has made sure that we got on the radio, KFRU and KOPN for broadcasting tonight's forum. There is a voter's guide. I've mentioned this a couple of times for the primary election. It's available on the website for the league, which is L W B C B C dot org. Stands for League of Women Voters, Columbia, Boone County. You can vote before August sixth, but not after August sixth. So make sure that you've got your votes and your plan ready to go so that you can vote. For what we've talked about tonight. Thank you all for your attention and for being here.